Okay, good. Good evening and welcome to Monday, July 24, 2023, meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. We have just come out of our paperwork review and we're prepared to start the meeting. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
One side note, Selectman Weber will not be here tonight. He has a work commitment and so we'll miss him tonight. And Mr. Lynch will join us shortly. He went to close the windows in his truck for the impending rain, so. First, we have review and approval of consent items. We have an AP manifest for July 18, 2023, in the amount of $80,877.58. And for July 25, 2023, in the amount of $212,741.41. We have a payroll manifest for July 20, 2023, in the amount of $61,882.53. And for July 27, which is blank. Do we have an amount for that? In the amount of $54,858.86, thank you. We have the tax collector reconciliation for June 2023.
Yep.
And the town clerk's reconciliation for June 2023. We have a PA-16 NHDRA application for reimbursement for state forest. What is that about?
We get a couple hundred dollars by the state forest land.
So we're getting money, we're not spending it?
Yeah.
All right, I like that. We have authorization to transfer funds to property reevaluation expenditure TF warrant Article VII in the amount of $25,000. Authorization to transfer funds to general assistance expenditure TF?
Expendable trust fund.
Trust fund, okay. Warrant Article IX in the amount of $10,000. And authorization to transfer funds to fire vehicle and equipment expenditure transfer fund warrant Article X in the amount of $40,000. And an authorization to transfer funds to the public works expenditure fund warrant Article XI in the amount of $60,000. Does anybody have any questions or anything to remove?
All of those were approved at town meeting in March.
Yep.
And that's what we signed in the little green book.
Yep. Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the nine items for consent.
We have a motion from Ms. Queenen.
I will second it.
Second from Mr. Gannon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries four zero zero. Requests for additional items are other business.
I have one. During the planning board meeting, we had a developer come in for 172 multifamily townhomes on Route 102. They're going to experience a long delay with DOT, like we had a prior developer within the last three months. So can we have a conversation, it's a case-by-case basis, just to discuss his dilemma today?
Okay.
Thank you.
Find a nice home for that in here. Is there anything else? No? Okay. Public input will occur no earlier than 6:45 PM. Well, since it's now 10 minutes of seven, we will open it up to public comment. Is there any members of the public that have something they'd like to say? No? Okay, perfect. In that case, we'll close public comment. 6:57, that's the official time. All right, under business, we have approval of the minutes for July 10, 2023. I did not see them. Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
No. I did not see them neither.
Yeah.
Kim says they're in the portal.
Okay.
Do you need a chance to read them? You want to postpone it or?
I'd like to table them, but you sound like you have something.
Oh, I just have three very minor.
Yep.
He's here today.
What do you got?
On Section 1B, when we're talking about Mr. Lynch not being there, if you could change it to say he was not feeling well instead of he was feeling well.
Oh.
And then in Section, I guess, of Roman numeral five, 1E, you're referring to, Mr. Leary said that Kim would get hold of the insurance company for cars or something. Can you say Kim Kleiner, so it's not Kim Queenen? Or you can say Town Administrator. And then the last one is an item 2C, my Selectman Reports, I think NRPC, when you get down to the NRPC one. If you could remove, I was nominated to be the Vice Chairman but not the Secretary. You said Vice Chairman and Secretary, if you could just scratch that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
So we don't have enough for a quorum on a vote for this because Ms. Lynch and I did not see the minutes.
We can get to the minutes. I would add on top of Selectmen, Queenen's changes. I wasn't present, okay. So Karen White, Finance Director, handled that meeting.
Yeah, Karen, last one, yep.
So do you want to table these until, okay, I'll make a motion that we table the July 10, 2023 meeting minutes until the next meeting.
It's August 7, I think.
On August 7.
I'll second.
You want to vote now, Bob? You're not going to be.
We have a motion from Ms. Gannon and a second from Ms. Queenen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Okay, business. The 2022 financial audit from Markham LLP. Hello, I thought you looked familiar. Welcome.
Thank you.
He's smiling.
I am smiling.
Okay.
My name is Scott McIntyre. I'm a partner with Markham. You'll notice when, that the report is signed by Melanson. Just a quick background and I can certainly take any questions. In January, Melanson merged with Markham, a national CPA firm. The profession of public accounting has changed a lot in my many years in it. Right now, students are not going into accounting. So hiring new graduates to come in underneath us has been a real challenge for two or three years and we needed to make a move to continue to be able to service governmental clients in New Hampshire and around New England. We joined forces with a much larger firm, one of the, probably the 13th largest firm in the country. It's given us plenty of resources to continue to provide services to local governments here in New Hampshire. And as I was telling Karen earlier, we actually have clients in all New England states at this point in time, so. I can take any questions that you may have on that, but I did prepare to walk through our audit of your financial statements, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Please do.
If I could turn your attention to page one of the financial statements, the independent auditors' report. I'm really not going to walk through it in any detail. It's very simple. It's unchanged from the prior year. And what it tells you is, based on the auditing standards that we followed, in our opinion, your financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles here in the United States. Otherwise known as, technically, it's called an unmodified opinion. Most of the time, it's generally referred to as a clean audit opinion. Your financial statements are clean, they are materially fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Now, you know, really, before I usually talk about the opinion, I kind of went a little bit out of my own order. I usually try to tell, you know, those charged with governance, the audience here for the exit meeting, you know, a little bit about how the audit went. I'm very pleased to be able to report to the board tonight that our audit of your financial statements went very well. Sure, you have the clean or the unmodified opinion, which is critical, but I think perhaps even more important is you hearing from me that we found the books and records to be in good working order, key reconciliations were performed on a regular and timely basis, and as a result of that, we did not need to propose any significant audit adjustments in order for your statements to be materially fairly presented in accordance with GAAP. That sounds a little bit like required communication. It's because it is. And two other real quick items of note that are required communication. The next one deals with the fact that there were no disagreements in how to apply generally accepted accounting principles between the town and our firm. And the last one deals with estimates. There are a few estimates in your financial statements, the largest of which are your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability and the related accounts that go along with those, as well as also the estimated useful life of your capital assets. All those estimates were reviewed by us as your auditors for reasonableness and consistency with other similar governments. We found the estimates to be, you know, within reason. There's certainly nothing jumped out at us as being an irregularity or anything like that. So following the opinion, again, I mentioned page one through three is our opinion. It's otherwise referred to as a clean opinion. Pages four through 10 is your management's discussion and analysis. This is a great resource to go back to at a later point in time to understand why certain key account balances have changed. It takes us all the way to page 11. And for those that are probably looking at a PDF online, it's probably either page 13 or 14. It's the Statement of Net Positions, Position, pardon me, and right above the single column of numbers, it says governmental activities. Now, I turned to this page because this is considered your long-term perspective balance sheet or Statement of Net Position. We're going to look at the general fund, which is, you know, the primary operating fund of the community in just a moment. But this is part of the reporting model for you folks. And the real highlights here, it's pretty, pretty hard to have a conversation about a local government's financial statements today without at least touching base on the net pension liability and the net OPEB liability. Again, on print page 11, about two-thirds of the way down the page in the non-current liability section, you see a net pension liability of just under $5 million, $4,996,000. As a point of reference, that liability increased by about $1.2 million over the prior year. And there's really one driving factor behind that. And then calendar 2020, pardon me, the New Hampshire retirement system is a June 30 year end. So for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022, for the retirement system, investment earnings were not, did not meet their expectation. And so when the earnings came in less than expected, the collective liability for all contributing members went up and accordingly, your proportional share of the liability went up. And again, it increased by about $1.2 million. Now, to put things in perspective, you know, Litchfield, like all governments in the state, you are on a funding schedule with the retirement system. What does that mean? You know, obviously, things will fluctuate over the next 17 years, but essentially, if you keep doing what you're doing, in 17 years, this liability amortizes down to zero. So just wanted to add that perspective. The net OPEB liability, OPEB is an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits, it's retiree healthcare. That amount is actually down about $300,000 from the prior year. And again, it's not, for Litchfield, it's nowhere near the size of the liability of the net pension liability. Now, if I could go, jump forward two more pages to your governmental funds balance sheet. This is the one where the first column of numbers says the general fund. And up at the top, again, it says governmental funds balance sheet. First thing I'd like to point out is that there's a new column on this year's governmental funds balance sheet, looking left to right, the second column from the left, it's your grant fund, grants fund, excuse me. It met the definition of what accounting principles call a major fund in calendar year 2022. There's a formula for it, if you, I can speak about it if the board would like. But essentially, this is where your error money is. If you look in the middle part of that second column, down in unearned revenues in the liability section, you see a balance of 904, just under $904,000. That's the money that you've collected, you've received from the ARPA, American Rescue Plan. Accounting principles don't permit you to take it to revenue until you spend it. You have to do something with that money. So it's a revenue recognition issue. So it's classified, you have the cash, and the offset to cash is this liability called unearned revenue. Because of the significance of that liability in terms of its size, it triggered what is known as a major fund. So you have a new major fund this year. But the focus in almost all discussions about a local government's financial statements are the first column of numbers here, and it's your general fund, with the focus being that third number up from the bottom. Certainly, the second number up from the bottom is your total fund balance of $3.4 million. And above that is your unassigned fund balance of about $2.8 million. You certainly have accounts above that, your assigned fund balance, that's predominantly encumbrances, your committed fund balance of $480,000, your capital reserves, and there's some restricted and non-spendable amounts there. But the account balance that gets almost all of the attention is the unassigned. And that $2.8 million represents about $170,000 increase over the same amount as of 12/31/21. It was about $2.6 million at the end of calendar 21, and it jumped up to about $2.8 million at the end of fiscal calendar year 2022. Now, if I could quickly get you to, to understand the reasons why that key account balance went up by about $200,000, if I could ask you to quickly turn your attention back to page eight, print page eight. And at the bottom of that page, there's a little table that shows the general fund, unassigned fund balance and total fund balance as of the end of the last two calendar years. And you see that the unassigned fund balance changed or increased by $173,000. Now, if you look at the paragraph directly above that, and this is why I indicated why MDNA, or Management's Discussion and Analysis, is such a good place to look at to understand why certain key account balances may have changed. If you just look at the second sentence in that paragraph, "The town's unassigned fund balance increased by the $173,000 primarily from favorable budgetary results of $418,000." And if you choose to look at page 45, you'll see the different types of revenues and expenditures that created that positive budgetary results of $418,000. And that $418 is softened or lessened by about $142,000 of fund balance that the town elected to use towards 22 capital budget, not operating budget. I recognize that $418 less the $142 doesn't get you to exactly the $173, but it's a little bit more than that. But the basic premise here in that statement highlights that its favorable budgetary results that help generate surplus exceeded the amount of fund balance that you used for capital purposes. So just a nice little way to wrap up a conversation about your general fund, unassigned fund balance. I did want to point out one more page in your overall financial statements. If I could go to page 18, this is the Statement of Changes in Fiduciary Net Position of your custodial funds. Custodial funds were new to your statements last year, came with an accounting standards change. And I just wanted to highlight it again because it shows the inflows and the outflows of all the dollars here at Town Hall, most of which, most everything that you see here on this page flows through Town Hall and the books and records here. But you're really collecting the money and remitting it to the school district or to the county of Hillsborough. It just kind of gives you a bigger picture of the inflows and outflows of resources that flow through the town's books and records by looking at your custodial funds. That is a super quick walkthrough of your financial statements. And as I said in the beginning, probably the most important communication that you are, that I'm able to offer to you folks tonight is that our audit of your financial statements went very well. A very timely audit. We're here on the 24th, and we wrapped this up right at the end of June, if I remember right.
I was going to say May, but yeah.
I think, we didn't, we didn't get the report out until later in May, but everything was done and essentially tied up within five months, and then we were issued within six months. And that's a, that's a very timely completion of the process.
Very good. So we're healthy?
You're healthy. The unassigned fund balance is generally the measure that almost all readers look at. It's nice to see an increase in that account balance. You know, I, I think it's important to have an unassigned fund balance, any government. It's a little bit like a savings account. One of the things that is a little bit unique to New Hampshire, and I end up saying this to a lot of places that I visit, is, you know, how much is too much is a question I've probably had way too many times in 35 years of doing this. Keep in mind that you collect taxes only two times a year and you collect them in arrears. So you go through the first five months of the year without, before you collect a nickel in property tax revenues. Then you go another six months with only having collected, assuming you collect all of it, you know, 50% of your largest revenue source. So I think it's important to have a, for a calendar year government in this state, there are plenty of fiscal years. And then the fiscal years get divided into two categories, some bill and collect in advance, some bill and collect in arrears. Like Litchfield, you bill and collect in arrears. It's important to understand that, and because of that, you probably need an unassigned fund balance to help with cash flow during the year. Because again, you collect your taxes in arrears. You go, you spend five months' worth of money before you collect any of your largest property tax, any of your largest revenue source, that being the property tax, so.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
Just two. You've touched on the, on page seven, on the top.
On seven?
The deficit balance subject to, let me see. I think it was due to the liability of the post-employment benefits. What was that about?
Oh, on page 11?
Oh, well, on seven, on the top, at least the hard copy's number seven I have. It is in a.
Oh, yes.
1.496.
Yep.
Do you want to see this?
Yes, I see that, yep. It's also at the second number up from the bottom on page 11. It's the same deficit number.
Is that, it's a pension liability, so I understand that piece, but did they pass a law at the state level that pensions were going to go up 10% or, what was that law that went by? I mean, I'm trying to think of impact in the future. Is that coming?
Are you speaking this time here?
Yeah.
I thought the budget, they were going to be salaries 10% or wages 10%.
Yes, that passed.
Yeah.
That, state wages.
Yeah.
There's a, there was legislation for Group Two.
Okay, did that pass?
And that, I believe, did pass.
I believe it did too.
I thought it was huge, so.
Yes.
You just have to pay attention to this in the future for our.
Well, from the understanding that we have received, the expense for that increase is being picked up by the state budget. It's being, so it's actually being funded by the state. The problem with that is it's over a two-year period. And as we've seen in the past, in municipal, what the state sometimes passes then can be turned around and undone in future legislatures, which is how pensions started, right? We were going to get 35% of, the state was going to put 35% in, and then it went to 20 and then something eventually, yes. So you watch it, but at least for this budget year, it is being picked up by the state.
Okay. So maybe one year it may not. All right, so something to watch, right? We just need to prepare.
It's something to watch. Many things to watch with pension.
So it could go from 1.5 million to, what, worst scenario, $3 million to, I don't know. It's a lot of money for Litchfield, it's all.
Yes, there was some numbers actually passed down, I can get those from you, passed down from NHMA. So Catherine Heck had done quite a bit of analysis and I can share those with the board.
Okay. Just, I just want to just be aware of this, something we need to pay attention to later. Also, on page, my version of 24 for the hard copy, Section 3 says deposits and investments. It is, let me get, see if I can find the area.
I'm sorry, what page?
Mine's, the hard copy's on page 24.
Yep.
It says Section 3 Deposits and Investments, Custodial Risk, it's Custodial Credit Risk. Let me know when, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, so this, not the description of the custodial's credit risk, but the second paragraph says, "As of December 31, 2022, none of the town's bank balance of 13 million, almost 14 million, right, was exposed to custodial credit risk. As of December 31, 2022, all of the town's investments were subject to custodial credit risk." And I just would like an explanation if.
The first sentence in that paragraph deals with the cash deposits. The second sentence deals with the town's investments. It's just two different classifications.
Okay, so that makes sure why there's no backing. Okay.
Yep.
All right, I just thought it went, we were all safe and all of a sudden, we're all in credit. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, all right.
I want to make a note that maybe that, some language there could be tweaked a little bit.
Did you, I don't know, are you seeing that, what I was seeing there?
Yeah.
Okay, so it says, "None of the bank balance was exposed to the credit risk, uninsured or uncollaterized than it was." And then the other one is investments, that's true. Okay, so I see now, all right.
This is for you.
I just wanted to know why there was a swing, if there was one, but it sounds like it's okay.
It's for you to keep, okay?
Thank you.
You get to keep it. Any more questions for the gentlemen?
I sit as our representative to the Budget Committee, they're going to be happy to hear this. Some will want to cut our funds a little bit because they say we have money, but it's for a good purpose.
Cash flow.
Cash flow, got to have it, right? So, no, it's very good. This has been, I've been sitting here four years and we've had good reviews, so. Our people do a very good job. You got that right. I can't thank you enough for them, I mean, you keep us going.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do for us.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
And we like the new name.
Pardon me?
We like the new name.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Students aren't majoring in accounting?
Yeah. Wow.
He said students weren't majoring in accounting.
No, no students going into it.
I think they go into, you know, financial, investments and stuff.
There's always money in accounting. All right, up next, we have Energy Committee interviews with Sam Terrill and Eric Olson. I'm going to guess this is you two. Gentlemen, come on up.
Do you like solo power? I might.
Yes, so, thank you very much for stepping forward to serve on the Energy Committee. They both filled out an application. Sam currently sits on the planning board.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Okay, I thought you looked familiar.
And they're both Litchfield residents. Looking at their background, a little bit that they gave us, I think that they'll both fit well on this committee. You know, the biggest, one of the biggest things about this committee going forward, at least in the short term, is going to be the evaluation of whether we enter into a community energy agreement. And so having some idea about Litchfield, about being a property owner, about utilities, know a little bit about utility rates, that's going to help, but we can walk you through that. But it's a short term. We would have to have a warrant article ready for town meeting time if the committee decides that they recommend that to the Board of Selectmen. So we were looking, originally, you had wanted four members of the community. So we still have two, but I think we're starting off on the right foot.
Yep, maybe some others will hop on board, but we can't thank you enough for wanting to be a part of it. We're at a kind of a point now in town where we're discussing not just electrical, but water and pretty much anything else to do with utilities, where we want to go. So this is going to be a very important committee, so. Again, thank you so much for wanting to get on board and helping out. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anything you want to ask of us or?
I guess I was just wondering, and Kim, I think you touched on it, what the scope of this committee would be. So is that the main, is that the only objective that there will be? And then what will happen with the Energy Commission?
Great question. So, you know, Chair. So, you know, Chair Leary spoke to it. There's a lot of work. I mean, you see it every day, right, with the water issues and how do we handle the water issues? The committee is a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen, so they can keep it in existence for as long as they feel that they need that. I think the community power, the water, we are working on some things with water. There's a plan right now. Then there's always the issue of Budget Committee and looking to help and see, are we taking advantage of the best contracts when it comes to energy? And we work with NRPC right now on an aggregate contract. But we could always use that assistance and another set of eyes on that. So it's really up to the Board of Selectmen how long they feel, but I think it's a healthy set of projects for.
Oh, yeah. Keep you busy for a while.
It's a learning too. There's a lot of learning to this. You know, when you start getting into the power and stuff like that, the water, it's still extension wear a lot. But, you know, it's going to be a learning curve for, not only you, but for us as well.
And there's the potential for gas as well, where we have gas right over here in London Dairy for the power plant. And this, they, I think they have one or maybe two roads, but they're going to want to add more.
We have a gas line in town now that goes all the way down to Continental's from Manchester.
And there's lots of zoning we need to look at too, just for improvements of the homes and the buildings as well.
Yeah.
You'll be working with pretty much every board in town that we have, because we've asked everyone to put representatives on. We have Ms. Queenan and Mr. Weber, who's not here tonight, are our two reps. So you'll be working with them. Steve's not here, but Budget Committee and.
School?
The schools on it, so, I mean, you'll be working with everybody in town, so.
And schools, right now with the middle school, they're putting solar panels on the roof. So there's something there to think, it's going to come out of it. We've got a lot more roofs out there.
The town of Hollis does a lot with their municipal buildings, also with renewable energy, so that's, all the stuff can be looked at, for sure. And it costs savings for the town, right?
Right.
And the residents, obviously, personal as well.
We just did it on the streetlights two, two years ago.
Two years ago, yeah.
Yep.
We've just started to see.
Yep.
That savings. And there's a lot of grants at the state level that it would be very helpful to have some expertise to look at that and to assist us, you know, writing grant, responding to grants is definitely an area that we have a challenge with, with the small staff.
So what's their next move? Imagine they have to form a real committee, right?
Ryan contacted me, so we're dealing with Standard Power. And if you wanted to get a jumpstart, you could look at Keene, what Keene did with community power, they dealt with Standard Power. They were the first community. And then there's been a bunch of small towns that have stepped on since then. But they would like to get started as soon as possible. So we're hoping, if you know of two other Litchfield residents who might be interested, please send them our way. But we really need to get started.
Yeah. And in the meantime, you can go online, oh, she can give you contact for them, okay? So you start exploring.
For Standard Power?
Yep.
Are we looking at things that are exclusively for government use, or does this impact private residences and businesses too?
It's all the above, all the above.
So this would, it would, it would impact the the power rates or options for residents? Okay, interesting.
Yep.
And with the solar stuff's going around so strong right now, every roof you see has a little panel on it.
I am, actually, I'm waiting on mine to be installed now, which I've been waiting a long time for, it took quite a while to get approved. Went back and forth a bit.
Yeah. I just, I just, well, what I do for, I'm a building official somewhere else, and I've been doing it, and there is a backlog. Because the company's getting so many. I'm doing twenty a week.
Oh, really?
Okay, in the towns, okay, and such a back, back backlog.
Do we have the option of, I know that there, there's no peak, off-peak sale here, but in a lot of other parts of the country, other parts of the world, they have a, you know, ways you can store and sell back to the grid, which kind of balances out your power usage, and that seems like a more efficient way to go, but that doesn't seem to be an option that's available. I don't know if it's at all in this state, or if that's something we could have any impact on, or if that's the kind of thing.
That's what we need to research.
It's a great, it's a great passion.
Because personally, even if I didn't get more money to sell power back later, I would still want to, because I know that that's helping the grid.
Yeah.
And if my battery, actually, what the power company told me is that even if my batteries are, if my batteries are full, I can sell my solar to the grid. But I can't store power in my batteries and sell from my batteries to the grid on, on peak, which is what I would want to do, is sell down like half my battery capacity and then replenish it with solar, because that's maximally efficient for both the grid and for me.
It gives you an income, a little more.
I mean, it would be nice if I got more, you know, if I could get something back out of that, and, you know, it doesn't.
It should help the grid too, in a sense, because they don't have to spend, if they get power from all over, going back in. But it's all how the feed lines work, and we all know that. But dumping power back in, and it can only go so much in some of these lines. Okay, so you got to be careful of that.
It's a state problem too, because we, at NRPC, when I hear some of the lectures, we rely on natural gas for the grid, and there's a problem with that. And then there was one point when they were manually controlling the electricity on the grid, it was that bad to avoid rolling brownouts or whatever, that kind of thing. But the short term is warrant article season, we would like to be ready November to December, so if we have sixteen weeks, really. Our quick, short-term mission statement is to examine this community energy or power and see if the numbers make sense for Litchfield. It's an all-in opt-in, you have to opt out. So see if the numbers make sense.
So we're primarily looking at.
It's a go-no-go decision around.
An option in deciding if we want to do it, if it looks like a good idea.
Right, so we're just going to explore that, that's our first thing, right? Because we have a timeline on that. So explore if the money makes sense to do it, and then make a go-no-go decision, but at least be ready to go to the warrant article if we want it. So the hard selling point is, if we decide to go with it, everybody has to go with it, and they have to explicitly say no, that they don't want it later. So that's really the selling point there. But it might be cost savings worth it, then I'm seeing the governor's also declining the price of electricity now, so it's a moving, moving thing. But at least be ready to run the numbers, just to see where we're at. But that's, after that, then we go and look at these other things.
Is there a place I can get the details on that?
Yes, I can send both of you.
Well, Keene and maybe Milford, there was another town.
Community power presentation.
Who was the other town, was it Milford or Mason or somebody other there did it?
There were three that are all within the Keene plan. They all did it at the same time, so they all operate within the Keene. But I'll send you the presentation that they gave the board. That's a public document that's out there, and that'll give you more information so that you can start to read up on it. I'd say New Hampshire's behind other states drastically, coming from a community that net metered. It's been a challenge, and it's been a challenge for community power as well. So when Keene started the process, it took them two years, only because the, the state legislature kept kind of flip-flopping on what they were going to allow and what they weren't. So at least that's solid now. And I do know another town that literally got it done in twelve weeks, but it was, it was a rush. So if you know of anybody that would be interested in the subject, please send them our way.
If there's anything we could, can we share this on our town website? The saying that this is what we're trying, trying to do? Okay, and they can attach what the presentation was for us?
Mm-hmm.
This technology's speaking, stuttering Chris.
Could we still use NRPC's, one that we're using, at the same time?
We are locked into the NRPC aggregate.
Yeah.
The NRPC aggregate would end if we had a warrant article that passed.
Because we saved like eighty-one thousand dollars using that.
Yeah.
I didn't know if we could use both. All right.
So we get them the information that they need to get them started? When's the next gathering?
We're waiting for the public to join, so we can set up a meeting, so it should be sooner rather than later. And then, looking at the days available, how, we'll have to reach out to you on your schedules, work schedules, because we only have so many cable crews, and there always seems to be meetings going on, right? Unless we go to the fire station, but we still need a crew, right?
I think now that we at least have two on board, it would be okay to get started. We can always add the other members if we need to, but I think important thing is to get it started.
Get going.
Yeah, get it going, because you are under a time crunch.
Right.
Right, we have schools, and I think we're just waiting for budget.
Yep. And we meet on the twentieth, so.
So maybe it would be.
Sure, whatever.
Yep.
We can fit you in Sunday morning at two. So if you're expecting more of an Energy Committee, that would be after this first thing. And the town of Hollis is really a great example of everything that they're doing, you know, how they're attacking it. I'm not saying we could use them as a model, but we can definitely learn a lot from them. I'm trying to help them save everything, with, you know, the buses, everything, everything's trying to be renewable, so, solar, everything. Unless, and bring your ideas as well, right?
Yes.
Please, yeah.
Ideas are a good thing. Okay.
So do we have to make a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so I will make a motion to appoint Sam Terrell, one-eight-seven Charles Bancroft Highway, Litchfield, to the Litchfield Energy Committee. And then I'll make a separate one for her.
I'll second.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion from Miss Gannon and a second from Miss Queenan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Congratulations.
I will make a motion to appoint Eric Olson, thirty-four Woodhawk Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire, to the Litchfield Energy Committee.
Motion from Miss Gannon?
I'll second, with the same second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Congratulations. And you live right up the street from me.
We have solar, we have nuclear energy here, we're good, right? Their backgrounds are perfect.
Yeah, I'm just on the other side of the power lines from.
Yep, the Brown House?
Yep.
It used to be the Jelly Moss?
That's right.
Yep.
They moved back to town, actually.
Actually?
Yeah. They came back? And we also have a water study that we should be getting in like six months, right?
I have an update.
Oh, okay. So watch the meeting.
You'll get an update, you'll get right in on it.
So when do you think you can get us the details?
I'm, well, I think you're very smart to start right away, so I'll reach out to the committee members that you have, Selectman Queen and Selectman Weber, the school board, see how fast they can get a meeting, and if you two can give me some ideas of nights that you might be available. I think if we went a little earlier, we could, I'm not sure if either one of you are available at five o'clock, or if you're still working.
Maximal.
Okay.
I get out of work at five, and I'm about a half hour from here, so.
Five, five to do.
Okay, so then we'll look at dates, but I'll get, I will get you the information on the community power tomorrow. I'll get you that, so you can start doing your reading, and then we'll schedule something within the next week or so.
Excellent.
It's fascinating, we promise.
It is. Mr. Poulsen from Standard Power will come in and give a complete presentation and work with the committee hand in hand.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Take care. Next, Economic Development Committee request.
You want me to give that? I don't know why it was called a request, but just an update?
Sure.
Okay, let's see. We held our first meeting Thursday, July twentieth, not that long ago. We will now meet the last Wednesday of the month, six p.m. at the Town Hall. Not this month, because we already met, but we'll start in August. Members present from each town board, and then there was Jay Mancower from NRPC. I was elected to chair the, and run the meetings. We reviewed our charter. We wanted to include the school board in the town vision, so want to make sure everybody is okay with that. Is everyone okay with the Vision twenty forty, twenty fifty to include the school board? We thought that would be prudent to do that, and we welcome them, okay?
Part of the town.
Absolutely, so we were glad to do that. And I'm not sure if you reached out to them yet, you were waiting here.
I was waiting.
Okay. We had high-level discussions. We want to have a desire to have many forums and numerous outreach activities, so it's to include as many townspeople as possible in future surveys and interviews. And we know stakeholders need to be involved later, you know, landowners, banks, that kind of thing. We will work with the master plan. We did give homework out to read master plans two, five, six, and nine, which was really read number six first, the economic development that we have currently written in two thousand and two, and to look at the community design that we did in two thousand and nineteen, because we were speaking of some items in there already, to look at population, housing, and transportation. We will involve exploring what other towns are also doing, just to poke our nose in there. So at this point, we just want to focus on what the public wants. We're not going to focus on viability and cost, what does the public want? And then we will go from there. And that's where we are today.
Very good. And this is a good time for you to go into your other, that you had.
Oh, for Mr. Scher, okay. Yeah.
What you wanted to add, and before we go into town administrator and.
Okay. At the Planning Board, I believe on the eighteenth, discussion about the new development Rose Meadows came up. It's a hundred and seventy-two multifamily townhouse units at two fifty-five Dairy Road. The Planning Board did approve the application as complete, and now we're starting the process of the site plan review. So the developer was told that his DOT issue, his permit, would be brought to this board meeting today. I promised him that, so I'm doing that now. So his issue is, this project involves the developer having to work closely with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation due to changes that will be required on Route one oh two. There'll be turning lanes involved, it's across from the, what is it, the Cutler intersection? So we're not saying he has to change anything with Cutler, we just want to, just know, he's going to be working with DOT hand in hand. Due to worsening DOT staffing issues, this developer will probably have to request approval to begin the project without full DOT sign-off. The DOT person that was assigned to his project is no longer working there. DOT staffing issues is statewide, they're down twenty, thirty percent of staffing due to aging out and some moving to private sector jobs, and it's affecting many developers not being able to get their permits across New Hampshire. It'll take some time to fix, and the state's working on that. I don't like approving everybody, you know, like a blanket one, but we said it would be case by case, so that's why we're here. Until the staffing issues is fixed, a proposed solution is that the developer and the town would work with their legal councils to create a contract that states that this developer will not seek any occupancy permits, and that they will not hold the town liable in any way should DOT later not approve their application. This is a rare request, we have done this only for one other developer recently, in the last, I think, three months or so we've done that. If the Board of Selectmen agrees, a similar contract can be created. We did that for the other developer. A small, I, you know, just bringing it up if we can do it. Since a small piece of this large parcel of land is also in Hudson, we would ask our legal council to determine if the town of Hudson should also be included in any contracts drawn up. So that's what I have for, bringing it to the board to see if we want to grant this developer, you know, what we did for the gas station that's coming into town.
So this really gives them a chance to get equipment on site and start working without having to wait for their DOT.
This gets them going, doesn't get them where working is, they've got the planning book function to go through. Okay, what it is, is that the study's going to be done, or what is going to be needed, work on the DOT, on the state road. Okay, that's what's happening now, what's going to be needed. And that's going to come back to the boards. So it's going to be a little while. The problem with it, like, like they're saying, yeah, the staffing is a big problem today. And they're saying we can't do anything, because they don't have anybody. But I think we got other outside engineers who are very familiar with the DOT stuff. They're like, our town engineer is very familiar with the state stuff. So that would, that would be very helpful in assisting us. Okay, the board and you and whatever. Staffing is a big problem, every time you drive into Nashua, Department of Public Works are looking for help. The same thing, no matter where we go. We had to put one up here in the police department pretty quick.
I mean, he's doing his due diligence, he's doing the traffic studies, he's working with DOT, you know, it's just.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, he does everything by the book.
He knows, the gentleman who's doing this knows everybody in the trade up in this, I'll let it go at that. So let's just, uh, we have, we may have to use a consulting engineer, track traffic one if we need one. But I think, uh, Mr. Carrick can handle that load, okay?
Yeah, I think he has a traffic engineer, right?
So.
They're coming in with the traffic study.
Yes.
Oh, the study, yeah.
Mr. Charbonneau is dealing with, um, a really very reputable, same as the gas station. I think we would follow the same process that we did with, um, the gas station project. I'd reach out to their attorney, um, have our attorney, um, read the waiver. It would be a waiver, any type of liability on the town. NRPC did a very good traffic, um, report on this property, which Lou looked over, Mr. Carrick looked over and concurred with, so I, I would agree with, um, Selectman Lynch that anything on this property would be taken care of. Where there's such a large lead time for a project of this ma- of this magnitude, you're going to have DOTs.
Eventually on it.
Yeah, weigh in before. And he's suggesting, you know, he would not look at a certificate of occupancy for any, any building before that DOT approval was received.
And if the workers in place to make it safe for people going in and out, even during the construction survey, you gotta consider that. You know?
And if Hudson is involved, if, if his attorney can look at that. I'm not sure if it was a little park on it or there was a storage unit there.
Yeah.
So I think we need, if Hudson could weigh in, in that.
There's a gentleman in Litchfield, lives on that road up there on the backside, and then this lander butts it in the back. So he was concerned, he came, he came to me, so I told him, he was here at the meeting, okay, the last time I walked in. He was here with you guys. So that was a good sign.
We can reach out to Hudson's engineer.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with letting him.
So what does he need from us? We're not, don't need to vote?
We don't need to vote.
No.
No, it's a planning process.
Does he want something written, just so he knows he's okay? Did he have his lawyer start the process to contact you, or?
Uh, no, I believe the planning board chair mentioned that I would reach out to, um, the, Mr. Charbonneau, Mr. Petropolis, and Mr. Attorney Hollis.
So you'll do that, let him know the board, it's okay?
Yeah.
I don't think we need to worry about him, I think he'll take care of everything that needs to be taken care of. He's very.
Well, the two, the engineering firm that they have is very good.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the lawyer, I'm very familiar with, he does win cases, I've lost a couple.
And he also said that this is a four-year project, so it's.
It's bad good.
Yeah, I think we, we let him, we let him do their thing.
I agree, I approve.
They've gone through all the steps, they're just waiting on, basically, it's red tape, that's state level.
Correct, that's it. They don't have the staff.
It's not his diligence, we don't need to hold him up.
It's everywhere in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
Installed.
Yep. Okay, we need to let him know.
At some point, we're going to have to say no to these things, right? Right now, we're being nice, but, uh, yeah, I don't know when the state stabilizes, we'll have to.
Well, what are we saying no to?
Usually, they say, we don't even approve your site plan until you have all your waivers done, your DOT, your traffic study, so he can't give us the DOT permits. So, and we don't, yeah. And we only can extend them so long, right, six months, whatever the rule is, right? Or he'll be in front of us asking it to be waived, or he can follow that process.
But he does have a few more items in front of the planning board.
He has, yeah, he has more to do, big items to do, so, and he's doing them.
This is a circumstance that's out of his control, so, I mean, and out of the state's control. I mean, they can't do it, they don't have the people, so.
Yep.
Okay, so let him know he's, he'll be alright? Cool, thank you. Alright, does anybody have anything else before we go into town administrator reports? Alright, very good, in that case, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So I have asked, um, all of the departments, um, all of our departments are working extremely hard and especially as we head into budget season. Um, so I asked everyone if they had an item that they would like the board to know about, um, to just start sending me those by the Friday at noon prior to your meeting. Director Brunel sent over two. Uh, the police department MDT Cruiser computers have all been updated to the latest generation hardware. Um, and this was funded via ARPA with the board, the board's approval. Um, and I have to say, he worked extremely late into the evening doing this when he could get the cars. So hats off to him. Campbell High School, uh, the U D A, B D A, which implementation. So they were working to make sure that the radios were working inside of the building and up to capacity. And that's for both police and fire, and that was funded via a school grant, um, that IT collaborated with school on. So both police and fire were very happy about that.
Yeah.
Joan, let me know that the planning board is going to take another look at the impact fee schedule, um, on August fifteenth.
Um, yeah, we don't have a meeting August first, which I'll get into on my report, but, uh, we only approved three of the six, right? Because we were waiting to hear from the commissions, right? Because you have to be on the SIP plan to get some impact fees, right? But I think we need to look at the overall zoning. There was a zoning ordinance about impact fees that we need to look at. But she's thinking we're going to renew, go over changes to them?
She thinks you're re, you're taking another look at it at August fifteenth. There is a C I P meeting on August seventh, which we intend to update, um, C I P on the police.
Okay, then we would, well, we didn't.
So.
Didn't we approve fire, police, and school, that's the three? But now there's more items on it, but.
And recently, um, Administrator French and I did meet with the construction company that had done the original plans, uh, for the police facility, which was going to attach on to the fire department. We had a number of questions, um, some of them being space concerns. And if you're going to enter into a building of this expense, I really think that, and Administrator French agrees that we need to look at the plan again, actually, um, bring in some of the other officers, um, to give some input on it. One of the major reasons for looking at a new facility was storage needs, and this plan really doesn't address those storage needs. So that might be going back to an assessment and taking a step back.
Relooking at this whole thing.
Yeah, from beginning. And then if you were going to go out and look at architectural drawings at this point, it would really require an R F P. So I don't see us being ready for this C I P plan.
I don't see it neither.
I just don't. So we're all working on the budget, um, there's been, uh, there's some challenges. Hydrants is up twenty-one thousand.
Great.
Congratulations. Dispatch and ambulance, ambulance contracts, Ms. White, Chief Nickel and I met with Hudson. We're still in negotiations there, um, and we're still looking at that. We're looking at the cost of outside contractors with, and the cost of existing staff or whether it's cheaper to add new staff. Animal control, this isn't one we had spoken about since the retirement, um, of Mr. Poulian. But we're looking at that coming in-house and drawing some significant changes, ten to fifteen thousand. Um, and we believe that can be done with the police staff with virtually little change. And then custodian, so, um, right now, we share our custodian. He works twelve hours here, five hours over at Talent. With the retirement, um, so quick, um, we brought in the gentleman that had filled in, when Mr. Poulian was out for a brief period earlier this year. He is a individual contractor at this point, he's operating as an individual contractor, doing custodial work for municipalities, us, Hudson. Cheaper than what we were getting before. Everyone here at town hall, and I did speak with the chair of rec, is happy with his work. So we would suggest moving forward in that capacity. And we'll bring that too with the budget, so you can see the actual numbers. And then the, so that I have the budget scheduled, just to refresh everyone's memory, um, below. We would like to ask to have until August seventh. Your first meeting with departments is August fourteenth. That would give you a week, um, to look the budget over, if that's acceptable with you. It's, it's taking some significant work to pull this together and, and really examine some different options that we haven't examined before. So I didn't know if that, a week was enough for you to look it over before, before your first meeting.
We're not going to have everybody come in on one night, right?
No, no.
It's going to take us a couple of meetings to meet with all the departments. So at least if we know who's coming in the first week, we can go over that part, and then, and then.
Right, that's why I wanted you to have the schedule there. It's really, you know, town meeting, town clerk, tax collection, sanitation. Road agent accounting.
Yep, it's, it's small groups each time.
One of the significant challenges that we're having is people not using the work order request form. So I was hoping to have some data to move into this budget, and I opened it up and there was none. And it's very difficult for our departments, because, you know, they work for our residents and they want to please and they want to make sure that everything is handled. So I'd like to send out another request for it to be used. And I've asked, um, Director Brunel if he'd create a Q R code. I don't know if that gets people there easy or not, um, but we really need people to use this. It's extremely difficult for me to work without data.
So this is if one department needs equipment from another department?
Or work done.
Like a person to work?
Yeah.
Like opening a ticket for.
The internal work, well, okay.
Kevin and company.
So you can do the budgeting, I guess, or planning, right?
Right.
And, yeah, for the staff that you need, yeah.
Tickets, justified positions in IT. So it'll do the same for Kevin.
Yeah.
Conservation had a request, uh, for a couple of trash barrels, um, at Morse Falls. And a weekly pickup. I did speak with road agent, and he said it would not be a lot for him and his crew on Mondays when they pick up the rec fields to just go over and pick up those. The caveat being, if there's wild animals that get into those trash cans, his crew's not going to have the time or the capacity to go pick up trash all over. Um, so we could work with Dave and Solid Waste to make sure that these are some.
Secured lids.
Secured lid.
Holes in them.
But those tend to be more expensive.
Well, Conservation's got money, they can buy them, right?
So it's, it's, I wanted to leave that as a discussion for the board to decide whether you wanted Conservation to pay out of their fund or whether, um, we are picking that up somewhere else.
Conservation has some money to do it. The other side of this is the type of barrel or lid that you got to put out there. Now, the ones we cut down on the bike path, the animals can't get into them. And they're secure, so they don't fall over. And they got a lid type thing on it, okay? Who wants to stick their hand in poo, that's the side of that one? But, uh.
And those were expensive, because I spoke to Mr. Mellon.
Lids cost more than the barrels themselves.
Yeah.
But that's half the battle, is, is spreading the trash around, okay?
But this, this kind of goes back to the conversation earlier, is we're adding more work to.
Kevin?
But he seems to think he can, he can swing it okay?
It would be that once a week, that would be the only time that they would empty them and.
You've got to pick up the trash along the bike path all the way through. So he's just going to go up the road, the hill grass, I mean, the Route three A. Stop there, get that, head back down.
Does he do the Corning Road field?
No, he does.
Dara Pond?
Yeah, he does Dara, he does the barrels at Dara.
Corning Road, you know, oh, you got dumpster out there, Pickle, right?
Well, there's dumpsters at all of them, but I don't, I don't know if the, I don't know if he dumps the barrels at Corning. Corning, Jeff, Dara, all have barrels with lids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know the arrangement now.
I thought they did.
Kevin was, Kevin and company was definitely doing Dara because there was a lot.
Yeah.
And I believe the rec was pushing the different organizations to chip into. And that's something I was saying, they, if they use them, they should dump them. We have a barrel, the dumpster there.
Sawmill, that ball field right next to the dump, okay?
All the tennis courts and whatever?
Yeah, the, the, the tennis courts. We do, he does those, right?
I don't think so, I think he just does Dara. I really think so.
Because pickle, uh, you, they got a couple trash cans which rec.
Yeah.
Purchased for pickleball, and I don't think he's doing those.
No, I think pickleball said they would, pickleball association said they will chip in and dump those in the dumpster at the end of the court. And then down.
Down the field.
Right at Sawmill, there's a dumpster at Sawmill by the soccer field. I don't think there's barrels on there, I think down there, it's just the dumpster.
Yeah, you're right.
But we could find out the cost, um, because sometimes, um, Mr. Mellon can get a pretty decent cost. And then let Conservation know the cost of them to come out of their fund.
Yep.
And that we'd pick it up on Monday.
They can use their funds for that, yeah?
Yes.
They can use it for maintenance of the apartment.
Very good, thanks.
And then the last item that I had, I did include what we have for C I P projects so far, because I just wanted the board to get an idea of what the departments were submitting to C I P. These will probably be discussed at the, um, August seventh meeting. Some of them still have quotes pending, um, so, and, you know, there's quite a few items there that are suggested by the library trustees.
I'm surprised Rex didn't submit.
I was too. There's, so we obtained and reported, um, to you a few meetings back about a grant NRPC is helping us update our hazard mitigation plan. We actually met, um, with NRPC's representative. And one of the members that should sit on that committee should be a member from the Board of Selectmen. The last time, it was Selectman Lynch. We, the first meeting is August 8th at 10:00 AM at the fire station. So we would ask that you appoint someone?
I...
I'll appoint.
I knew, I was just gonna come this way.
He is emergency management, right?
Yeah, I ME, yeah.
So it's right up his alley.
I'm used to it.
I mean, this is required. You have to update this plan in order to be eligible for FEMA funding.
Do we need a motion to appoint him, or do we just let him know he's the lucky one?
Yeah, you can just let him know he's the lucky one.
You're the lucky one.
I'll contact him later. Congratulations. I will see him tomorrow.
And this is an update, so it should go relatively quickly. She thought no more than six meetings.
That's all right. I will say the last two weeks, August, I will be bathing in the sun, so I won't be well. Or the rain.
At least you're bathing.
And that's all I have, other than I will share that I did have a discussion with Weston and Sampson this afternoon. Was very positive. Preliminaries are coming in very positive for us. And they expect to have something, at least some preliminary numbers over by Labor Day, with hoping to finalize in October. And they're really trying to help us meet...
A deadline.
A deadline of town meeting. You know, I think I had shared that it came in positive for our neighbors. And, you know, they have some challenges because they are not in the, their entire town is not in the St. Obane decree. So, I think they said east of High Range Road is outside of the descent decree. So they have other challenges to look at. At least for us, we're all inside.
This is St. Obane area, east of the range.
Yeah.
Okay, that's another story.
Yeah, so I'm happy to hear that, but they said it's moving along very well.
That's a way to...
Good.
Thank you for that update.
It's how it lands, isn't it?
Okay, with that, we'll move into Selectman reports. Mr. Weber's not here tonight, so we don't have a recreation update. So we'll go to school facilities and conservation, Mr. Lynch, and emergency management.
Emergency management, I have not met yet. And for Conservation, we haven't met yet neither. They're on the summer vacation.
And school?
The school, I met once with them. We got meetings coming up in August all the way through. There's about three or four. The meetings we have is for still facilities regarding Great DeGriffen School, what to do and stuff like that. It's a large group involved with this outside. So we're still in the very preliminary stages right now. And we've got other meetings scheduled for this whole month coming up, which I have on my agenda there.
All right. Next up, we have heritage, Mr. Gannon.
Our last meeting was a good meeting. Chair Colby has a goal of trying to really formalize the meetings, add some value, I guess you could say. We had a conversation on what the charter is and how we can get the word out there on what the commission does. Some suggestions, teaming up with LCTV and doing some recording at the different buildings in town and trying to explain how they tie back to the town. I think it's going well.
Next up, capital improvement and planning board, Ms. Queenan.
All right. Planning board, no meeting will be held August 1st due to a very light planning board schedule. Next meeting will be August 15th, 7:00 PM at the Town Hall. Apparently, we're talking about impact fees. Let's see. And I did tell you that on July 18th, we did approve the Rose Meadows multi-family townhomes, but the site plan review is still going on. The capital improvement plan committee, we will next meet on August 7th, 6:30 PM here at the Town Hall. Department heads and boards and commissions have started to provide their SIP items. Note, the SIP items and the Dolly values drive the impact fees. I think also, let's see. We did wanna start analyzing requests in August, so it looks like we're doing that. That was our goal, right? Not to wait till November and when war and article season is upon us, so we wanted to start early. So we're there. Nashville Regional Planning Commission, next full commission meeting, commissioner meeting will be Wednesday, September 20th, 7:00 PM at their office at 30 Temple Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. We're continuing to work on our statement of strategy, setting NRPC's directions for the next five to 10 years and working with the public. Let's see. The only thing I'll report on the economic development committee, because we already spoke about that earlier, is we are waiting for the budget member to be appointed when you meet next time. Litchfield Energy Committee, I believe we already spoke about that earlier today when we had our two candidates, our new public commissioners in. So we really just need to get started, just because of the war and article timeline. That's all I have.
Very good. Budget committee, we meet on the 20th. We haven't met for over a month, so it'll be our single meeting before we get into the fun of the season.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, one other thing that I wanted to bring up was, I wanted to thank Selectman Gannon and Jason Brennan for cleaning up the water mess at the old fire station. We've had water there for about a year now for residents that need it. And that area, the St. Obane area is expanding through town. So if anybody is on well water, they should at least get their water tested. It's supposed to be paid for through Gold or Associates. But if you're worried about it at all, we have water at the old fire station. So I know my neighbors have all tested positive, and I'm waiting to get tested. And I think like Steve Weber should probably do it too. Everybody on that 3A corridor that doesn't have town water should get their wells tested. It's very important. So, but contact Ms. Kleiner and ask about water, and then we can replenish the supply if we run down. That was the only thing that I had outside of the budget committee, so... I'll think of other things at about 11 o'clock tonight, but whatever. With that being, that takes care of our publics session of this meeting. We have two items in non-public under, and I just lost it.
RSA 91A, semicolon, 3, 2A.
2A, dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and two, requests that that meeting be open, in which case it shall be granted. And RSA 91-A, semicolon, 3, dash, 2, dash, C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement of a waiver, of a fee, fine or other levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. That being said, can we entertain a motion going non-public?
I'll make a motion going non-public.
Motion for Mr. Lynch.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Queenan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 400. At 8:12, we'll be going into non-public. And thank everybody for watching. Be safe. And have a great evening. Our next meeting is August 7th. Have a great night.